I don't even know how to kick us off. Welcome, everybody, to the first meeting for July. I guess we'll do roll call first. So Jesse Looper.
Sarah Brown.
Lauren Bachman.
Rebecca Daly.
Robert Sossman.
Billy Cooksey.
Okay, thank you. We have Eric online. Yeah, sorry. Who do we have on Zoom?
Eric. I'll admit.
Okay. I'm gonna have to take notes while I talk. Um, okay, public comments on non-agenda items.
Sorry, Aaron just turned on.
Okay.
He is on.
Hello.
Hey.
Hello.
Okay, public comments.
I introduced myself before. We've been here before. We're the Creative Loft. Pretty excited. We just moved into the historic hotel top floor, so we're excited to be in there. Um, as I, you see me, I'm always in paint, and so I paint murals and can't, I'm getting ready to go over to OCB and get theirs going. And um, what I was wondering, I wanted to propose, um, my dream has always been wanting to paint a underpass. And so I was wondering if you guys were looking to get that painted for the city and would like just to read some stuff over here, because I'm not really good at talking. I just like to paint.
Versus.
But I was elected to read this. All right. So by beautifully this Pope, by beautifying this public space, this mural can significantly enhance our urban environment. One idea of ours is one of a kind visual represented representation of this is my vision of an underwater experience. It's not just a mural, it's an experience. So if you just walk with me for a second, on the east side or the west side, you're walking into it and you see those concrete walls, right? The concrete walls could be like a beach scene with the waves and you'll see little crabs and they could even be interactive with the kids going, hey, what kind of crab is that? Oh, look at the shells. Look at that. It'll look exactly what like a wildlife picture would look like. And then you're walking up into the, it's shallow and then it gets deeper, right? And then boom, you submerge under the water and then it's an underwater experience. And then you'll see fish above you, around you, beautiful corals, beautiful other colors of fish, all maybe having names um, for kids to go, hey, if look at the shark or manta rays or whales. And then we could even add in some urban stuff from Wellington, like uh, train, maybe under submerged water with fish and algae going around it and little crabs and whatever sea life we find under the sea. Um, I do have an image of other colors. Um, is there any way we could email someone it so you can bring it up, but it's under, under the colors, you'll be looking at blues and aquas and um, thing, yeah, like this.
So bright.
Real bright reefs, uh, sea turtles, because they're my favorite, and then in different corals and names of it and stuff like that. Um, so that was my vision to put in, just to give something uh, fun for kids to go and see, you see, you go to the aquariums in Denver, right? And there's lines out the, out the wazoo of people going in there trying to see in your wall to wall. But something painting like that brings life to the, to the scenery around it. And um, that's my, my pitch for it.
That's funny. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
That's wonderful.
Did you want to us to email that to you or just so you can see him, everybody can see the events and stuff?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Um.
I'll send you the email address.
Yep.
Yes.
And then.
Just kind of put it in your ear and talk about it, think about it and we're here to, for any ideas.
Any questions, anything like that.
That you would want added to typically anything. So there's some trout there, maybe.
Yeah.
And they have. Water lakes or.
Yeah, but you do lake fish instead of.
Uh, so we just watched anglers catch a 10 foot half dish or something like that.
Right. So that would be fun.
In the near to lake. So I mean, it'd be fun to add stuff like that.
It's, is that something you're looking to donate us or are you looking for there to be funds raised to do that?
Either way, I mean, that is our business and that's what we would love to do is, you know, that's what I do is make money off my art. And so um, here's a few things. If you do decide you want to raise money and invest, um, number one thing is the aesthetic enhancement. Murals transfer doll concrete like it is right now where the leaks and the cracks and stuff, we'd make that look like art.
It was water.
And water and stuff like that. And um, it'll make it bright. Also, it helps crime deterrent is some of the things it actually deters from people vandalizing. Because I mean, really, the, if the taggers tagging some other art, that's, it's like frowned on.
Yes.
So if someone works real hard on art, usually the taggers won't go and tag it up. Um, also, we've had a lot of good things going on the murals down here in the Wellington downstream. People loved it. And I thought maybe this would just be a cool visual for people to go under the highway and see stuff like that.
Would, would you be able to send us like an estimate on what you think a project like that would cost?
Yeah.
That gives us some ideas then.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Perfect.
Yeah.
Um, the national thing is about nine to $10 a square foot. Usually we come around $6 to $7 a square foot is what the square footage. But if we do the square footage pricing, because it can get pricey in square footage, I've noticed, um, we don't charge for paint. So I will provide all the paint. And so that's a big thing. And we use high good paints. So Montana black is what we do, Montana cans. And they're outdoor, even paint cars with them too, so.
Okay.
So.
How long would a project like that take, like weeks?
Well, I would need help with that one. And so I already have some artists that follow me around and hang out with me a lot. And uh, they're just some, one of them is my niece and stuff, so um, we.
We scope it out.
Yeah, it would probably be about a month, because it's pretty big.
Okay.
So, and that's eight hours a day, no rain, no, you know. Weather, everything being good.
Not one car on the highway above.
Yeah.
Ideal conditions.
Yeah, ideal conditions, but we could get her done.
Okay.
I've been doing it for 30 years. Um, I grew up in it, so I love to paint, so. And this talking, woo.
Don't worry, there's, there's only two people online. They recorded though.
Hear all my fumbles.
How does a paint hold up to graffiti? What's that? So it's a, oh, you're all.
That's, I think that's.
Yeah. How does a paint hold up to graffiti if it does get tagged or, I mean, is it repairable?
Yes, yes. And uh, usually they use a water-based paint or an alcohol paint, and we'll be using thinner-based paint. And so if they do come around and do some spray fans, I mean, we can always scrub it or blend it in and make it something. I mean, it's not that hard, but yeah.
That's all we got?
That's great. Thank you so much for coming in.
Yeah.
That'd be awesome. We have talked about it. We have years ago, the Parks Board talked about it. We just never.
Yeah.
We never did anything suspect.
Internally, we've always talked about trying to start an art in public places. It's just kind of never, I won't say gain the momentum. We're just not at that place yet. But what's going on downtown right now, you know, the fire department's getting their logos put on, you know?
Yeah.
That's the momentum that we need, so.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, we appreciate that. Absolutely.
Two weeks out, two weeks out and then we'll get over that, so.
Well, the other piece too is having you be local and you know, you care a lot about the community. That's.
Oh, yeah. We live Wellington right now, so.
And I imagine it encourages use of trails too.
Yeah.
I mean, it creates a destination even.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what, who, have you guys ever been into the Supreme Court Museum in Cheyenne, Wyoming?
Uh-uh. No.
I designed, I designed and built all that stuff in there. Um, we had, it's so interactive with kids and stuff like that. We, I could make it into like paintings and make it what kids want to, because it doesn't it go to the uh, bill or the prison, so after golf.
Mm-hmm.
One side does, yes.
Yes.
Okay. They both do currently. It will just be on the west side at some point, but yeah.
It would be, because don't they do a tournament for prizby golf here too?
They used to.
They used to, okay.
Hopefully they will again in the future.
Yeah.
They would just make it.
They will again, yes.
The pressures going back and forth and.
Yeah, the ponds are getting so much use. I mean.
Yeah.
I've been here um, since 2017 and every year, it's just astronomical how many more people are going to the ponds. The kids are riding up and down McClellan, under the underpass just to get to those ponds, so.
All about fishing.
Yeah.
I know, we could even do it a freshwater too. I mean.
Yeah.
Freshwater would be cool, but it'd be different kind of colors. We'd just go into more of the greens and the yellows and just make it look, it's pretty good with rainbow trouts. Walleye.
Oh, bass sunfish walleye, yeah.
Yeah.
Like the ones that you would catch in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Love it.
That's cool. All right. Well, we'll get out of y'all there.
Send the, yeah, pictures and what you think for.
Cool.
Yeah.
Even like a rice.
Thank you so much.
Trip distance walking.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you for your time.
Thanks to all.
We appreciate it.
Yeah, send, send over an email.
I sent you an email.
To me.
Right. You, I usually don't, because I'm not out here talking to people. I'll get their painting.
It was good.
Do you have another one?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you much. Thank you. Y'all have a good day.
I love that. Thank you. You too. Hey. I'm sorry, I did not keep this on the three minutes, so.
Oh.
Geez.
We don't.
Three minutes, 10, all the meetings, we never.
Yeah, right.
Times is pretty family.
Yeah, there you go.
That's true.
Yeah.
Other public comments. Dennis, you're good? All right, great.
Dennis gave them some of his time, so I think we're okay.
Um, okay, moving right along. So consideration of minutes. Did everyone have a chance to look at the April minutes? We tabled that from last month. Do I have a motion to approve?
A motion to approve our April 9th meeting minutes.
A second. Thank you. And then did everyone have? Oh, sorry. All in favor?
All right.
All right, thank you, Dennis. Thank you. The area. Is Aaron on?
Approve.
Yeah. Okay, and then May minutes. Motion to approve. Make a motion to approve the May minutes of 2025.
Second that.
And all in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Great. Thanks, everyone. Okay, so board review and discussion items. We have Barry Dunn here. I think we're ready to move into that, guess.
Yes.
All right.
Um, do you want me to do the PowerPoint itself or?
That'd be great. You don't mind. Thank you.
Yeah, let me bring that one up.
And while you're loading that up, uh, just appreciate the time. And I know you have a tour right after the session, so you probably want to spend a good three to five hours in here, let it, let it cool down out there, right? That's what I'm, what I'm guessing.
All right. Well, why don't you introduce yourself first? Yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
But I'm, I'm Jason Gank, and I uh, serve with Barry Dunn and uh, serve as our practice lead and we have projects all over the nation. And I happen to be local uh, for this project, which is awesome. I'm based in Windsor. Um, of course, my best title is you're a project manager. So I get to be honored to support you and help lead and uh, hopefully, you know, bring your vision together with the community about your future and Parks and Recreation. I've been with Barry Dunn four years. But don't worry, I have 27 years of, of local government experience. Most recently, I was a director of Westminster, Colorado for about 10 years and before that, some other places. But this is all about you and really delighted uh, to be here with you. See, I know you've met some of our other team members too. Uh, Ryan Hegrenest, probably Rich Newman, and also a local team. They bring a lot of different perspectives and expertise to the table, so you're in really good hands. And uh, it's, we've been having a great time serving with your community and we're just getting started. So tonight's purpose is to uh, give you an update to where we're at and really talk about what's coming, you know, what's, what's ahead. But we're also treating this evening as a discovery session. And what that means is that this is, this won't be your only time, but this is a significant opportunity for you to give input to the future of, of your community as it relates primarily to Parks and Recreation. I have some questions and things like that that I'll ask you. So that's kind of what we're focused on. And and Billy, are we still good on time? How much time would you like me to, to ride?
It is up to them. This is, this is their time. This is the board's time, so.
So what, what would you guys, you may have other items on the agenda. How much time would you like?
Now, we're, it's pretty much the tour.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think, I know that Jesse and I both won't be available next weekend, next week, when you guys are doing all of those meetings. So this is really our only time to be face to face.
Well, if I'm giving too much detail or you like more detail, again, Jason, just throw something at me, raise your hand or, or just speak. I know we have folks on, on um, Zoom too that can just speak up whenever they like, but uh, a brief overview of the presentation, but really, most of this is going to be conversation-based, but uh, kind of an overview of what we're going to be going through this evening uh, on the, on the slide. Go ahead. We can move pretty quickly. So the overall project is, as a reminder, kind of, you know, what we're focusing on, we're helping create a framework for you uh, to guide the future. It's flexible. I mean, certainly we want to be clear and not just have sort of fluffy recommendations, but be clear about options you can take. But also not to put the board or the community or staff in a corner to say, this is the only way to get there. That's not how we conduct our planning. Very much uh, our efforts are uh, working hard to get community uh, groups, individuals, and the town all on the same page as best as we can. We find when we're able to do that, there's a better chance of long-term success. So it kind of gives you an idea of what are we doing? And we're really focusing on 10 years. That's not to, you know, what, it's not to say things might happen sooner. It's also things that may not happen longer than that. It just really depends on the depth of, of the service or project area. High-level overview of kind of where we're at, where we're going, sort of, when does this conclude, early 2026? Lot of steps there. Uh, as I said, we're really just getting started, although there has been quite a bit of things moving forward, uh, which I'll report on, but to give you kind of what is the general timeframe? Discovery and review. Uh, so we can go ahead and advance. We've already implemented the kickoff opportunity. Uh, Billy and team have been up, we have a SharePoint site that we share files to make sure we're under, you know, preparing to plan before we plan, so we understand where you're at. Uh, and we've been making strides on that. There's a lot here on your needs assessment, but what you're seeing there is a photo from the Brew Fest, which, by the way, was awesome. I will tell you something, and I'm not just saying this to be uh, because I'm here with you this evening, you know, we are involved with community events all over the nation. I mean, some that have over 40,000 attendees. And Ryan uh, attended the fourth with Art, and I was at the Brew Fest. And I gotta tell you, you guys have it going on from the standpoint of organization. Um, I'm sure you guys and your, your, your lens are probably like, oh, that's not perfect. We had all these issues. That's what, that's what needed to apply. So, but how the partners came together and taught and, and, and sort of promoted conversations and just had a good time and really accessible for people from setting up chairs, sharing food. I was like, this is, I mean, Ryan said, he goes, you know, this, the, the smaller town pulls off events better than some of the biggest cities. I'm just saying. And I know, you're probably saying it's not perfect. I'm sure you're like, oh, geez, Jason, but no, I just want to give you kudos. Staff, leadership, community members, partners. It just makes you feel good being here at your events. And we heard a lot about that from your community too. So anyway, but the needs assessment is rooted in better understanding of what the community wants. Uh, that doesn't mean we, we just, we go to folks that are heavy users of your system, but also working with people that don't ever use your system, that may even be against your system or just not understanding it. So we really use all these strategies. I won't read them. If you have questions, you can ask me to interact with the community. And one of them is going to be with you this evening, some, some Q and A that I want to learn from you. Go to the next one. By the way, um, I do have some numbers to share with you, and these are really early, but I got this from our team today. So far, you've had 130 plus visitors to your online portal, which we're going to look at in a minute. You had an ad campaign for July 4th that reached about 2,000 individuals in your community, and that led to 68 additional follow-ups, by the way, if you're wondering how far. But the big push is actually coming next week around the town hall and around the other activities. So our team does a, and it does a really good job in getting community voices connected. So you're going to be seeing a lot more numbers. Hopefully, you've seen that information around the community. There's, and there's some of these out in the hallway on the some right there too. Uh, this, this card will take you directly, well, it'll take you, but if you scan or visit the site, you go directly to the social pinpoint where there's a series of tools to interact with. It also provides updates and upcoming events. This card here is like a real quick, this should take someone 60 seconds. So it's sort of a quick, hey, I'm in a line, I'm watching my kid do swim lessons on a softball tournament, right, or game. You've had a long day, you know, like Barry Dunn, why are you bothering me? Oh, hey, but I'm going to give you a Yeti if you fill this out potentially. So this has worked really well in your events. And so this is sort of a quick hit way of saying, you know, what do you want, you know, in your future? So we, we hit as many areas we possibly can to collect uh, data. So hopefully, you've seen some of these um, what they, I can point one out, one of our staff came up with uh, and they're, they're nuts, but we, we do these, these things as that's the image of the Blues Brothers there, and their vision is to drive around your community with a megaphone and, and call attention to Parks and Recreation. So so far, Billy hasn't fired us or said that's a bad idea.
Okay, Kelly Hodgley said that she would potentially drive it, so.
But I don't know how we came up with that, but our staff, they uh.
It's all.
They just.
No, it was uh, no, um, sorry, Rich.
Rich.
Yes.
Rich is a guy.
Is he the one with the hair?
Yes. And he's got a, you know, Rich has got a really interesting third-year career in arts and culture and communication, the management of local government. He's he's, he's exceptional, but we first seen him when he was, what's going on here? But Blue Mobile is the idea, it's not really going to be Blue Mobile, but the idea is more about using a tactic, that tactic that's different, that just says, what the heck's going on there in a way that's safe. We're not literally going to be, you know, bothering people. But calling attention to you, and saying, what, you know, what's going on? We've done these different types of weird things and interesting things all over the country. I think it's going to go well. So uh, yeah.
Is there a scheduled date for that?
Well, we'll be getting that out to you. We're working on that now. Uh, but we'll, it sounds like you're interested. I'll make sure to get that to you.
Well, I'm thinking like we have the mingle in Maine on Friday nights. That may be good visibility, not every Friday night, but.
Good.
That.
Love it. Yeah, where do you want to know it's up? So what you're seeing here, and we will, we will do that. We'll get the schedule with you guys, because I appreciate that. Not that we're going to read through all these things, but what we worked with your staff on is to say, what are your goals from engagement to community? That's really important to understand what your goals are, because not every community is the same and has different expectations. So here you have it, immersive. Uh, we expect our team to go to the people, not expecting people to come to us. Customize. We don't want to just pull something off the shelf, and we've never done the Blues Brothers thing before, by the way. Uh, convenient, like, like this experience I mentioned. We're not here to pester people. Uh, just quickly, what, what can you tell us? Uh, inclusive, so particularly hard-to-reach audiences. We do a really good job at that. And defendable, defendable is a strong word. I think really what we're talking about there is having data to support your decisions or to support informing your decisions about new considerations perhaps. Because, because as a board, you get a lot of voices. I mean, you had one tonight, and it sounded awesome, by the way. Uh, but nonetheless, you probably have a different request every week. And I always say, the good idea truck pulls up and unloads, right? And I'll leave all these things to choose from. It's like, hmm. Hopefully, we can help you provide some guidance, and that's what we try to do by the data we harness. So you can continue, Billy, if you don't mind. Uh, this is the prettiest graph chart, but it gives you an idea. When it comes to engagement, uh, primarily, we're trying to complete that by the end of August. That doesn't mean we don't spill into Labor Day or, but generally speaking, and this would be my first of several times I'll say this, we could really use your help. We're not relying, because we realize you're volunteers, okay? Uh, we're not relying on, and you doing the whole ton of work, but we do respect that you're community leaders, uh, and you have connections to the community. Anything you can do to spread the word, to simply share this link through an email or your social networks. Hey, folks, we'd really appreciate, you know, there's this special window of about 90 days that the community, you know, has even a louder voice because we're capturing all this stuff. Uh, and we'd really ask all of you and your friends in your networks, whether we're at a location, whether at the Blues Mobile at the Friday night, whether we're doing social, whatever, please. We want to hear from people that don't want you to do anything, to people that want you to build a, I don't know, underwater basket weaving tournament center or something. I, I, I just, I, I don't know. We want to hear from everyone. So gives you a general sense of what's coming when it comes to, I know engagement is, is always one of the most important services typically that a board is interested in from our experience. So I want to make sure you knew what was going on. So uh, what I wouldn't mind doing, and you guys have given me some time uh, this evening, and I really appreciate that. We have about six or seven questions, and this is actually the first one. Uh, if you wouldn't mind either, uh, if you don't have a digital device, you can actually use my computer. Uh, one, it did act on these one at a time, but I, I literally had the site pulled up on my computer right now. If you don't mind going out of that site, and we've allocated time uh, during this, if you could spend about three minutes, and I will time you, because we have other topics. Spend three minutes, and I'd like you to go ahead and interact with some of the tools. And yes, as a board member, we do want you to leave your own comments. Um, but this is for you too. So if anyone, okay, it looks like everyone has a device. If you need one, you can grab my laptop, but I'm going to give you guys three minutes. This is your first exercise. Part of this is just making sure you're familiar, but also part of it is I really do want you to put input in. And guys, what I noticed last night is that there hasn't been a whole lot of comments, if any, yet on the map. Granted, we're just getting started. I, I, I'd give extra appreciation tonight if you would even put a couple of plots on the map if you have any ideas.
So that's one of our plans, just so you know, as we go out with our park tour, is to drop some pins on the map tonight as.
Then don't worry about that. But if you could, at least spend three minutes right now and at least familiarize, if you want to do a tool or two, meaning one of the apps on there, you can. Please go ahead and do so. Time you, just, just because we have other questions.
What if I've already done it?
Set time in three minutes.
You could. Text it to your friend. Put it out on social media. I'm kind of surprised that more people haven't done the idea wall, because it's such an easy snapshot.
And it's, don't, I wouldn't worry about it yet, uh, because we're just getting started.
Okay.
Our, our touch points, like for instance, our record touch points in the community was 62,000. And that was Gilbert, Arizona. And then the um, the one that had major recognition was the first one that we did 30,000 for Flugerville, Texas. So we don't mess around. We'll get there.
Okay.
I'm not saying we did 30,000, but we'll get thousands, yes.
Okay.
We'll get there. But yeah, you got about two minutes, two and a half minutes, please. Again, guys, you could go back to this later. We just wanted to give you a taste. I'll stop talking so you can actually read.
And, and I'll talk just slowly while you guys are doing this. Um, this is going to be amazing for the next few months, as one of the things that this board does is each person on the board has a park or a group of parks that they kind of.
Assigned to?
Assigned to, to look after. And that's why we're doing park tours to kind of go together to, you know, a group of parks that some of my houses, uh, we're going to Sarah's Parks tonight eh, after the meeting. But as you have Knowles and Harvest, don't you?
Kopee Mo out there. Okay.
Get the trimmer in?
My god.
Um, this will be a great tool when they have time in the next few months to go and pin each one of their parks. We're going to do it as a group the next few months, but we won't hit all of the parks before the engagement period is over. So this is my encouragement to our pros board to say, use this as a tool.
And to keep it really easy, because you're in passing, you're at the donut shop, coffee, whatever, um, drop these business cards.
Mm-hmm.
What, what's great is we've passed them out to multiple breweries, Lauren's Coffee Shop. Passed out of, they're here for our pros members right now to take and distribute to their respective areas. They, they should have been passed out at the trustees meeting last night. There was a stack of them for them.
Yes. Yes.
So on.
That, that, and also uh, and we have about 30 seconds left on this question. That, and also if um, just as powerful, maybe even more powerful, because it's a simple click, if you could hit as many networks you have in your email and social media, just to leverage that, we would really appreciate it. Rest assured, we're also conducting our own efforts on ads and promotions and kind of behind the scenes, things that we've learned and some good techniques, that's happening as well.
This is what's great about Wellington, though. Almost all of us are connected to something else, somewhere else, who is connected to something else, somewhere else. Our volunteers are, are very deep-rooted in our community, so information will get out.
Awesome. So you can uh, I'll, I'll, I'll let you, I see some folks typing. I want you guys to finish that, but please go back to this later uh, and consider a couple of times, maybe pinging, you know, some of your networks, and I just really appreciate it. Thank you so much. So uh, we can go ahead to the next question. Now, this is more of the discussion area for this evening rather than using the online tool. And uh, this is sort of a practice question, but nonetheless, it's really important. Um, and right now, we're, what, what I'm asking you to consider, and I first would ask you to do so uh, as an individual. Uh, as an individual, and I have these, these handy cards here this evening, and, uh, I'm just gonna separate stacks. Cause you're gonna need more than one eventually, and some markers. Yes, certainly. Yeah, if you wanna come on up to see the table to write it down, too. That'd be great, and. So, uh, this is really hopefully simple, kind of a practice. First, please as an individual, there's a reason for that. Rather than group, group think, as an individual, spend two minutes. And you don't need to rewrite the question, but actually to make this easier on me for recording this later. If you don't mind, this happens to be question one, just put a little one in the upper left hand corner, if you wouldn't mind. Sorry, I didn't do that in advance. And you can bullet your answers. All I'm asking here is to say. What are some of the most important challenges or opportunities impacting the town of Wellington? And guys, to be clear, this could be anything. It doesn't have to be Parks and Rec. So this is, hopefully everyone can come up with an idea, and you can just either sentence or bullet, uh, you know, a couple of ideas and take. Two minutes first as an individual to bullet the most important challenges or opportunities of any type. Impacting the town of Wellington, town as a city or as a organization, or town literally as a community, doesn't matter, it's up to you. Set time or two minutes.
Don't grade me on my spelling.
Oh, no, I'm not gonna, you don't have to worry about that.
Who'll read that and say public education might be number one?
Really appreciate you guys doing this, and we have about another minute left on this particular question, by the way. Oh, you're answering for some, oh, oh, you got it, hey. Oh, he's got it online. Thank you for doing that.
How dare you say that first one, Aaron?
Every idea is a good idea. It's called the yes and exercise. We, you, you, everyone may not agree with it, but that's okay. That's, I wanna hear different perspectives. And you got about twenty seconds remaining on this question, so you should be about wrapping up your last thought. And we are at time. Excellent job, folks. So again, thank you for your, uh, cooperation and assistance. So now that I'm at, you might guess what's next. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go around the room and ask you, uh, I know you probably have multiple things. I'd like you to report out one thing, but I'm gonna collect your cards to record all of them to be cleared. So once you're done reporting out on only one of your ideas, uh, that you most like. Um, knowing there's more written, just for the sake of time, I'd like to collect your card. So if we could, I'll go this way first and next time I'll go that way. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, community spirit and both like belonging.
Awesome, thank you. Uh, um, business revenue. Awesome, thank you. Billy, did you go?
No.
Okay, we'll keep going down here.
Pick one, um, building without perceived infrastructure to support.
Awesome, thank you.
Mm-hmm. I said making sure that our community members feel valued and heard.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Completed trail system.
Excellent.
Challenges funding.
Awesome. And then let me ask you, I think you all just used one side of the card, is that right? Why don't we save paper and use the backside and Billy, then you go to the next question? The next question, if you don't mind writing a two in the upper left hand corner. Now we're dialing in specific to Parks and Recreation in Wellington. So this is again, specific to somehow related either what we're already doing, could be doing, you've seen other departments do, but. You know, what, what do you think that the Wellington Parks and Recreation Department should build upon? What are their strengths that they need to, uh, grow? Again, two minutes on your own, please. A little more than a minute, you guys are doing great. Little bit more than twenty seconds, so it should be about wrapping up your last thought. And then I'm gonna go the opposite direction in the room to do the same, uh, report out on one of your items. But that'll actually collect the cards because you need both sides of it. You can use a new one. Okay, I think everyone's done, so we'll pause there. Uh, would you mind sharing one of your thoughts?
Sure. I think, uh, one of your strongest things that you have is you have multiple parks throughout town. No one has to walk a terrible long distance to get to one of your parks.
Awesome.
Um, I had that we, uh, uh. This is a hard one to say, but, um, the recreation program is awesome. I think that's amazing. Um, but the opportunity that I wrote down was we need more park waste finding. We got great parks. You just don't know how to get to them.
Yep.
Um, I said additional space that will increase our opportunity to increase programming.
Excellent, thank you.
I said the Fourth of July Town Event is so strong, if we can figure out how to replicate that, duplicate that. It's just an amazing day.
Other than the weather coming through midday, you know. I know what Billy wrote down. He wrote down the Parks and Rec Director. He, he wrote that down.
Town staff, I, I put that down too.
Let's continue, go ahead.
Sir, this is confused by the question. Well, I figured that what the pound town strengths are, so I just said passion. But I think that to build upon would be, I think that the, the clearer path, like a vision.
Excellent, thank you. No, that's absolutely right. Yeah, thank you.
Uh, both strength and opportunity, they're gathering spaces, infrastructure, facilities to do that.
Outstanding. And do we have any responses online?
Yes, getting people on the same page to move forward in a positive direction. Goalposts that you.
No, it's okay. If you wouldn't mind, I would love those cards, just so, uh, I have the opportunity later to just pull that in to the. As promised, I'll report all of that. Uh, some of your initial feedback on planning. And then, uh, I thank you for writing that down. That's so much help. I appreciate it. And so we'll make sure you get a little extra time, but we'll go ahead and advance to the next one. And guys, don't worry, I probably don't have like five total questions, but they're, they're really important, so. So here's the flip side. This isn't, you know, this isn't saying, you know, the sky is falling. Oh, look, maybe this here in Wellington. I don't think it is, but. Um, what can you believe are areas that need to improve? Uh, for, it's specifically Parks and Recreation. And again, two minutes, please. As an individual, then we'll report out. You got about a minute, so you guys are doing great. If I didn't say so, I meant to. In the upper left corner, please put a three. You got about a little bit more than twenty seconds, so you shouldn't be wrapping up your last thought. And Billy, if you don't mind, I'm gonna ask you to go first to report the online input, okay? And we are at time. Billy, do you have access to it yet?
Uh, Aaron's been texting us.
Okay.
Our group texts, so he hasn't responded quite yet, but give us a second.
Do you see the chat room or no, you can't?
No, he's, he's, he's just been chiming in here.
Oh, okay, no worries. Then, uh, let's start, uh, how about the end of the?
Sure, um, so I guess more funding to staff the rec department.
Good. Awesome, thank you.
Um, I said updating our parks.
Mm-hmm. Excellent, thank you.
Uh, focus on open spaces, something we don't talk a lot about.
Great. Uh, accessibility, just to be able to get to all the parks, the trail systems be finished.
Love it.
Um, missing major facilities like pickleball. Anything to support that.
I did skate park, that's all.
What I, what I can tell you so far, and I don't want this to sway anything. But, uh, in, in very early conversation, cause you know, we haven't had a ton, we might get input, but it's so early. I checked in with my team and they said, uh, if I wanted to report out, uh, a couple of highlights we're hearing so far. That are common themes, although too early to say this is a recommendation or an area to explore further, indoor spaces. Uh, whether that is whatever you think it is, it's indoor spaces that people have access to for recreation of all sorts of wellness types, okay? Uh, another one, uh, actually was swimming. People want opportunities to have indoor swimming. Actually didn't say indoor, swimming in general for aquatics. Uh, another highlight was trails and trail connections was another, uh, common theme in the very way too early. You know, to tell findings, but I thought I shared it with you. Did we have any others online?
Uh, he talked about more communication, but I'm amazed it sounds like.
Yep, and he would say, he said maintenance. Yep. Uh, maintenance at some parks and buildings, just probably. Kind of similar to what Sarah said, just infrastructure, redoing some parks. Uh, I do have to note, and I text this in the group, that we did just rebuild the viewpoint wellhouse. A couple of months ago, so he just hadn't gone by.
Yeah, take those opportunities, Bill.
Everybody will see it on the chat, the text group, it'll be like, haha. But I mean, that is the thing, like, right, this was great about this group. They, they are looking at some of the smaller things all the time and. You know, this just recently, very recently got done, hadn't been back to see it, but they're noticing the things that are deficient.
Yeah, great job, guys. Thank you for that. And if you don't mind, flip over on that card and put four. Some of you are way ahead of me. And the next question is. What are some different or new ways that the department can better serve the community? And, and I challenge you to dream big. I mean, that doesn't mean we're gonna build an NFL stadium, but Billy might. Um, it might mean, here's another way to ask this question, not that you have to think this way. Why do you leave Wellington for other Parks and Recreation services? What do you see, uh, in your, uh, family's hometowns, places you visit? Uh, destination based, meaning you leave here specifically to do what in Parks and Recreation in another community? You don't have to think about it that way. I'm just trying to help you think. Would like you to dream big here, what, what you think you could do to the department, you know, whether it's in two years, whether if it's in fifty years. If you don't have a dream, then talk about it. It's simple to never happen. So go ahead and write down some ideas. I'm giving you guys two minutes again, first as an individual, please. Thank you. And I really use a point of reference to say, you know, we did this, it's still remember. It's a long, it's a long, I call it, I call it a plan process, the journey. It's a long journey. It's like, what, you say ten months ago? You guys are doing great. You got, uh, actually still got about forty seconds, so you still have time. I don't think you're being rushed.
Of course they are, to my Red Sox. You're welcome.
I'm a South Sider, so the, the White Sox game, uh, the one that the White Sox won, and I guess Saturday, yeah. Yeah, don't worry, not many of us, there's very few of us that are good Sox lovers, so.
I'd be kind of red socks.
I'm, I'm from the East Coast, man.
So years ago, I finally checked my bucket list, I went to Fenway.
Did you sit on the monster? Cause that's still my dream.
No, uh, no, we didn't. We sat right next to the bullpen, right field though, which was cool. Like us, I'm like, I'm just sitting here. Anyway, we're out of time, sorry, guys.
Right next to that, what is it, like two hundred and six feet?
Right there in that short wall, yeah, it was us sitting there, yeah.
That's the best.
Late because it was actually for a work function, so we had a loop. We only stayed three or four innings, that's how we did four to stay, but, uh. It was, it was, it was magnificent. Okay, let's go ahead. Oh, Billy, go ahead.
I'll, I'll go first. This is the, the online, this is coming from Aaron. He said, uh. Uh, astroturfing an area at Centennial for a big stage, amphitheater con- concerts every Saturday in the park. And then indoor, outdoor pickleball facility connected to a small community center. Um, small as compared to the pickleball facility, ha, ha, ha. He didn't say ha, 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 but I know what he's saying. Oh, he said, no, all of Centennial. He wants to astroturf all of Centennial.
Oh, nice. Great input, thank you. Let's just continue to go around. I, I don't have any ideas, so I shouldn't be talking, so I, I really put five. I don't have nothing for this one. I was thinking of new different ways, like kinda like.
Oh, it's okay.
Okay, um, this will make it possible. I was lost with that. And then I was stuck on what you call cars when they smash together at the Derby. What's that? Demolition, thank you.
We used to do the lawnmower races over at the Timmy property, so people have been talking about bringing stuff like that back.
Yes.
Oh, we talk about events and bringing people together, like, that's true.
Um, I was thinking, thanks to support events like an amphitheater, but like even just one day events, mud wrestling, same property we're, or, sorry. I was thinking mud wrestling, I meant mud ball. One-off kind of events, those kinds of things, focus on recreation.
Yeah, excellent, thank you. Going off of what you said about driving out of town, what you do when you drive out of town, where you have to go someplace else for archery range, trap range.
Does, do you go to the one that's on, uh, the food or trailer and, 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 uh? Very cool.
All those things.
What, he's stealing your idea?
Oh, sorry. Like, that's awesome. Never thought about the archery range. That should go on the parties list of like things that. One that we're talking.
Yeah, it could get, we're gonna, we can get off, yeah, I, I agree, that would be so easy.
Uh, my idea was, uh, really interactive parks, trails, open space map, right? So online, I. Truly believe we should have something that we can pass out all over town, write a paper copy of something, but. Something really interactive where we could hop on and everybody can see what all the amenities are at each park before they even get there. Does this have? something really interactive where we could hop on and everybody can see what all the amenities are at each park before they even get there, does this have ADA, does this have, uh, whatever, um, something really super interactive and fun would be cool.
I love that energy, thank you.
Yeah. Um, I had a lot of, a lot of things, but, uh, I.
Your favorite. Now that I said favorite, it's even harder, right?
This was, this was some feedback I heard from, um, actually when I was out talking to someone on Fourth of July, was the ability to like have equipment that can run out, like the big inflatable balls that you guys took to the middle school. Someone was like, we wanted to, we would love to be able to rent those out for like a kid's birthday party, and I, and we talked about like, well, you have to be able to fund stuff and the staffing and like, it's a whole thing, but I think that our community would be more engaged if there was some opportunity there.
Yeah, I love that, you know, it brings me, uh, I've seen like, uh, neighborhood, uh, gathering trailers, but granted, staffing and supplies is an issue, so some people think it's turnkey and, you know, but it is cool, because then the community, particularly smaller community that's growing, could do turnkey and have some things that are standardized, you know, and this is, and the other one was that the, uh, uh, Gold Co for Outdoors Colorado does fund equipment lockers and will like bikes and backpacks, people can check out to go in the backcountry and all that, so I mean, you never know, so, love the ideas, go ahead.
That's, that's along the lines of what I put, so offering outdoor recreational programs like survival, wildlife issues, um, I love that idea.
Yeah.
The other one, though, where I started is we travel out of town to go to football, flag football all the time, soccer, but we have soccer fields, but we can't actually use them, they're not Wellington accessible, so, um, and then maybe a baseball stadium, so any kind of, you know, public larger venue to be able to do bigger events.
Awesome, I love, thank you, if I can collect your cards, please, and I just have two more questions for you, then you're gonna need a new card.
Okay.
And you're gonna wanna first put, uh, five in the upper left corner. And the question is this. Uh, and I know this is a hard one, cause it's so easy to do ripping cuttings, right, and create new, but we also need to challenge other things that just may not be a fit with your vision into the future. By the way, don't worry, it doesn't like literally mean we're gonna like cut anything, but we do need to have that conversation, uh, in understanding what are stronger priorities than others. You know, cause you can't do everything, but, so the question is this, what are any services or facilities that the, sorry about the wording, the department is already providing today? That perhaps should be reduced or consolidated.
Yeah.
That's a hard one, but I'm gonna give you guys two minutes.
Yeah.
That's the hardest question I'm gonna ask you, by the way, I promise.
Does this hurt your heart right now? Does, like, explanation count? Like if we were to say something is not being used as is, we, we recommend transforming it into something else?
That's phenomenal.
It could be that question, it could be, uh, this is such a great thing, but why does the town need to run it? Why can't the YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, or Kiwanis, or volunteer group, or an artist, whatever? It doesn't li- literally mean you are suddenly saying, don't do this anymore, it's just saying, you're going to eventually need to prioritize, okay? And if, if, if a skate park, I know you love that, comes up as number one, you know, how, how are you gonna do that, right? And so you're gonna have a lot of competing needs, not just in parks and rec, but in transportation, in, in utilities and all that, so we need to find a better way to prioritize, so, no fear, we're not walking out of here and, uh, and getting rid of anything, it's just challenging you to say, uh, and your name will not be like listed next to this. Uh, what, what you think should be, could be reduced or consolidated or transformed?
Or transformed or adapted, right, yeah, okay. Stop, we don't, we don't provide the, the moon here, so, I have ideas, but.
Specifically with the department, or?
Yeah, this is about parks and rec, yeah.
If we tore down the greenhouse, we could use it better for parks.
Put it on the west, I didn't think of that.
Tear it down.
You know, but whatever, no, it's tearing it down, by the way, uh, we've already, which is fine, we've jumped in some.
This is like all of the houses at Centennial.
Yeah, this always leads to more discussion, so, let me give you guys an extra thirty seconds here, um, turn that off, uh, I'll give you an extra thirty seconds to collect your thoughts. But even repurpose or, um, transform, you could write down at least one idea, I'd really appreciate it, so let me give you a thirty seconds here, as an individual, then we'll talk about it. Okay, we are at time, so, let's go ahead and start here, if you don't mind, uh, one idea of something that could be transformed, consolidated, reused, or reduced.
It sounds like really counterintuitive, if you know me and how much I love events, but I don't think the town should be doing all the events. I think that needs to be distributed among all the organizations and make it as easy as possible to everyone do all the events whenever they want as much as possible. Um, and there's a lot of logistics and facilities and rentals and scheduling, that would be, that would contribute to that, but we don't have to run everything. If everybody was running everything, we would have more of everything, so that's what it is.
And there's so many models out there like that, and, and then are like what the town is ready to, so there, there's choices to be made about that, and, and there's something that he said, when government doesn't, in my opinion, that it'll, it empowers other groups to say, hey, we'd like to have this twist on the event or something.
Right.
And take less of burden, you know, now, now staff will, will likely always be there anyway for infrastructure, but if you have the infrastructure in place already, outlets, access to lighting, access to tents, as part of your infrastructure, you can block each other, that's really good, and I agree that often in different communities, go ahead.
I, I agree with that same one, but I think the one thing we have is the batting cages, I think they could.
Yeah, you got, excellent, just keep going around the table, actually, we'll go here, she's still ready, oh, Billy, yes.
Aaron said he, he was thinking along the same lines as, as what trustee Daley said, is that, you know, allowing access so there is to, to do things in the town.
Create opportunities, facilitate.
Remoting opportunity for experiences, yeah.
Love it, let's go here.
Not being on the board and not knowing all the things that you have, I came up with, but just, I have nothing to offer.
Demolition, sorry, it's okay, go ahead.
I think town buildings out of Centennial Park, such as the greenhouse and the other offices would be awesome, so we could fully utilize Centennial Park for town.
Thank you, one, uh, two more.
Um, I had a similar thing, I put especially managing the Fourth of July and other town events, that, that's, I, I feel like a lot of pressure falls on our park and rec department to hold portions of that, so it, it fits really kind of in with what Rebecca was saying too. So.
So, um, transforming underutilized courts into pickleball courts, um, and also potentially reassessing the park green spaces, we've got a couple of parks that have a lot of space, which is great, but could that be used in different ways?
You guys are, I'm, this is fantastic, this is exactly what we're talking about, exactly what we're talking about, no one is saying you're gonna have to do any of this stuff, but it's, you know, uh, public certainly wants to know, well, have, have you thought about all the alternatives? We could say we had some discussion, and this isn't the only way we're doing it, but I, good question, good discussion. Last question, I promise, this one is hopefully super easy.
I think this group would like ten more questions.
Oh, yeah. But, this is one more thing that we could really use your help, again, if you write down a name or a person, it doesn't necessarily mean I'm gonna ask and go and call them. Cause I know not everyone likes to do that, but as you are a leader in this community, no question, your contact, you, being here tonight is a commitment to the future of Wellington, it just is. What can you do to help us? Simply connect the voices, what are some ideas, if, if you have some very specific ones, like, uh, I will use my social network, if you have one that says, I know the school superintendent, right, and I can open that door for you, Jason, right? Not to say I can't try and do that on my own, or, uh, by the way, I happen to belong to this church club, and they, they ask for every other Saturday, totally making this up, every other Saturday, they ask for a local speaker to come in. It'd be about parks and rec, you know, we have, and, and it's, by the way, sixty days, so, so folks, this is, this is, this is a timeframe, uh, that we have, so, give you two minutes to really think about that, as a leader in the community, what can you do to help the effort to connect voices of all sides? People that are, that hate parks and recreation, do people that love it, uh, what can you do to help connect those voices, to make sure that we're all said and done? The majority of the community can say, I knew that was going on, I knew I at least had a chance to give input. You got a minute and a half, by the way. You got a little bit more than thirty seconds, so, you're doing great, but start wrapping up in your last thought, if you could, please. Okay? In about ten seconds.
Yeah. That's what I like, I get to go first, I get to go first.
All right, Billy's gonna go first, go ahead.
All right, uh, a one gentleman named Aaron McConnell, who's flying across the United States right now in an airplane, says, first off, I know Dennis Hip Sag. I'm sitting right next to you. And then he says, um, I, I have kids in school athletics, getting the word out through a fifteen-year-old might hit different demographic than that, what that thinks, the Facebook ID for the old people, so, we're gonna hit it all, as you said, meet the people where they're at. He's trying to influence, uh, maybe his children to help out, is what it sounds like, kind of getting to that population, and, and might I say, from my perspective, and one thing that we do in our department, one thing that has been noted many times over before this process, is that our, uh, teens, tweens are very underserved in our community in general for any sort of programming whatsoever, uh, both in our recreation and in our schools, because they only go up so much, if they're not in athletics, or in, they're not in an after-school program, they really don't have a ton of opportunity to gather, uh, in our community, so, that age, the fifteen-year-old age, I think Aaron hits perfectly, the fifteen to eighteen is something that we are definitely looking at in this area to improve.
And you mentioned sports, I think, for earlier, and we're not opposed to Barry Dunn showing up with a couple of coolers full of, um, uh, popsicles, and handing those out and having quick conversations with parents or kids, not disrupting their play, of course, we're also not against, this has been what are most effective, if you have an in with a teacher, that'll literally let us into the classroom, either as a virtual setting, in like a local government class, and we've done that many, many times, guys, it is awesome, we have some folks on our team that are experts in conversations with teens. They are just phenomenal, that if, if, eh, but I get it, you know, teachers are so challenged with getting their main thing done within, within a limited timeframe they have.
Yeah.
But Billy, it is an idea, it's just if we could get a connection to one or two classrooms, starting at the new school year, at, at, with a, it's typically a teacher that you know, that says, I trust this process, I want my kids to be exposed to local governance, whatever, uh, and then we could, and then like, either we'll do it virtually, uh, or get the tools, the teacher do it, done that too.
Yeah.
Or James will show up with like, uh, you know, three dozen donuts or bagels.
Yeah.
Yes, or pizzas, and suddenly you have conversation going, so, I love that idea.
So you know, we, we do have, uh, a response, I sent them out to contacts at all three of the schools here, uh, they are on break right now.
Of course.
Um, I do have a response from one of the principals, and they're very excited, uh, work, it might be after next week, because they get back as administrators after next week. Uh, or at the end of next week, but, um, very strong in the, in the pre-buildup, the AD at the middle school, high school was very supportive of the idea as well.
Love it, love it, let's keep going, let's go to here, I actually wrote, put this for the district, so, fantastic.
I can get you in on the board for the school district, um, moving the park, we're having that up, if it could have it up on the screen with the QR code, okay?
No, I love it. Yeah, it was supposed to be there at the first one, we had technical difficulties.
And then cereal box concerts on Wednesday, and I'll be at the check-in desk, so.
Thank you.
I can work it.
Thank you, like you pass anything on to the American Legion, guys want, love it.
Um, we're already passing out stuff at the coffee shop, I know the chamber would be really great, the chamber shares with the town, and they can put that in North Forty News, and we could do the football team, uh, bargain.
Yeah, the craziest football one, I gotta tell you, is that, yes, uh, you guys familiar with Friday Night Lights? Did I tell you this already? Flugerville's worth our climb, I mentioned them right off the touchpoints, so our team went out and got permission to put postcards in the windows at the, uh, football game. You know how many cars were there for a high school football game for Friday Night Lights in Flugerville, which is the home, literally of the stadium, the older stadium that was in there was, from the show, was in Flugerville, over ten thousand.
Oh, please.
No, I, guys, I went to that stadium to visit, and you have a larger than your typical college videotape in the ends, and I'm like, okay, we're in another, we're in another life, this is another dimension here, yeah. Anyway, but I love the energy, I love the idea, yes.
Um, I just, you know, being visible in our neighborhood, you know, we have a neighborhood pool, talking to people who are there with kids, um, talking with our business owners, we, a lot of them already have these out, we've talked with them. Um, you know, we can promote through Friends of Wellington as well, mingle on May Night, which is the third Friday of the month, and then I think, I had Rice Community too, but the biggest piece that I think is important for us as we engage is being passionate and excited about it. Because if we are passionate and excited about it when we're talking with people, that is going to spark their excitement and passion about it. And I can't tell you how many people, I talked to people on the Fourth of July until I lost my voice, and then I felt like I can't talk to people anymore, but who, or they were like, hey, I'm gonna lose this. So let me scan it and pull it up, and I said, well, it's also on social media, I mean, I think it's getting to people, it's so easy, we get overloaded with Facebook, we get overloaded with all the social media stuff, we have to engage with people, feet on the ground, face to face.
That is our community too.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Love it.
Sorry, just threw. I totally agree with that, um, because we've had a lot of success walking around, so, in addition to that, um, the Rice principal, I know her, um, one of the social media groups that I think we leave out often is nextdoor.com, that's actually a pretty active group here in Wellington, I didn't know that. So people who are not on Facebook actually do next door, um, the school inserts, like we talked about, the sports and rec, we talked about posting on the team chats for the rec, like being able to push the, um, but here's my question, so, the drawing is motivating people, so, having a date or deadline for when things are due and when we need to submit, and then having a potential reward at the end, that helps people.
That worked at the Brew Fest, cause, you know, we knew that Brew Fest was, uh, before the formal kickoff and engagement, so the branding wasn't really fully ready, but instead, we're, we're just gonna throw a Yeti out there.
Yeah.
Not that we don't do that again for that event, and there were people that, oh, I want that, yeah, I want that Yeti.
Yeah.
And so they, yeah, we, we get the contests for that, yeah, we'll do things like, um, you know, we, we, um, may have mentioned this before, but like the, uh, um, the Stanley Lake Monster Program, which was a fictitious monster, didn't, obviously didn't exist, that was laying glass, which was done by artists, eggs all over the community, and people would be going searching. That program got so popular, and, and Ryan Hegerness on our team, he used to work in Westie, created that with Rich Newman, that program went through Canada, it got so, uh, and, and then the Mythbuster Show actually came with all the local news crews in Denver to, to find out what's going, and the cutest thing is the kids were drawing what they thought they saw as a monster. That whole thing, all it was really about was that, but it was really about, um, connecting people in nature that otherwise wouldn't be going outdoors, cause a lot of it was from like social media, like word of mouth, so anyway. Stuff like that, and, and I saw, for instance, I laughed at it, and I was like, that's awesome, the, uh, the stuffies, you guys have the stuffed animals that are the, um.
Welling. Well, the, maybe, uh.
I was like, I said to Rich, I go, and I took tons, I go, that, that's something, I go, what if there was like, uh, you know, fictitious dinosaur, you know, that was invading Wellington or something, I don't know, but you just gotta go a little nuts with it, and Billy's been awesome. Like the Blues Brothers idea, just to push the envelope a little bit, nothing, nothing crazy, you know, but something good, so I love this, guys, and, and the conversation doesn't end here, it actually continues from here, I do wanna collect those cards. And as you have other ideas, please email them to Billy, but we will be following up without the things, yes, go ahead. And as you have other ideas, please email them to Billy, but we will be following up without the things. Yes, go ahead.
Well, it just made me think when you were talking about that. Have any of your, you guys seen the books where it's like how to catch a dinosaur, how to catch a mermaid? They're really popular. My kids love them right now, but something along that line of like. How to catch Welly and you have these like funny.
Created the best idea.
We also argued, we just put out that scavenger hunt that we're talking about, and I just text Kristen, because she's been working very hard. And I was like, we did not get the, we did not get the. QR for the master plan next to the QR for the actual scavenger hunt on there, so. There's just things like that, you know, simple things like that were, were hitting different roles.
Like the biggest sponsors of the Chamber of Commerce, the town of Wellington is the top tier always every single year for the Chamber of Commerce. And we've never yet had an after hours or any kind of event that they planned for us. So I think they, they're always down for a party.
And guys, we're not opposed, and you know, because we're a private organization, as Barry Dunn, we're not opposed to sponsoring, like we've done this, um. Like a hundred wooden nickels that, uh, that counts as, as like a beer. Granted, we're not trying to hit, you know, get everyone drinking. What we are trying to do is to give it audiences. So we'll pay for a hundred beers. And you wouldn't believe how many people show up with anything free. Granted, we work with the local coffee or the coffee shop. We'll buy a hundred coffees, whatever. Uh, ice creams, we've done that too. So just, you know, keep thinking those ideas, but, um. As you can't tell, we're, this is one of the, one of the best things we do. We're really committed to this. So I appreciate your time. There is a few more slides. Are we okay to go through them, Billy?
This isn't me.
Uh, chair, chair is.
It's me for now.
Are we okay? We go in ten minutes?
Ten minutes, yeah.
Okay, I'm real quick. This is just a refresher of what else is happening. We are using Placer AI, who's a partner with us, uh, to do a different analysis on where your people are coming from, your events. For your, uh, downtown, for all your activities. It'll just be another way to look at data that we'll be pulling.
I'll be so excited to see Placer on the fourth.
Oh, my gosh.
Excited.
I want to see it so bad.
We'll give it to you. Uh, gap analysis, so, uh, our team has and will continue. To analyze, uh, any gaps you have in services as far as walkability, uh, park assets. Conditions of your assets. By the way, Barry Dunn never comes in and says, good, bad, and better. We work with your staff to find out what is right for Wellington. What is the Wellington way? Yes, we have like, I don't know, like nine hundred database points from different cities all over the country. That just means we have an eye for it. It doesn't mean it's right for you guys. So we will be doing a condition assessment as well as mapping your entire community. What that does is it helps inform potentially future, uh, capital decisions. And new ways of helping to invest in a different quadrants of your community. We can continue, Billy. Uh, we will absolutely be reviewing your programs and services. And comparing the, those things to, for instance, what is the engagement findings telling us, uh, about where your program should go? What is your market analysis telling us about where programs should go? Your staff, your team, your leaders will have new, with new data. To help inform them about their decisions. We can continue to go, Billy, and I'll keep going quickly for you. Uh, of course, yeah, that we're moving nice and quick. We will absolutely, once we get all this data, and this board will be heavily involved in that, we're gonna get all this stuff, okay? Don't worry if you organize and we overwhelm you. We're gonna say, did we hear this correctly? We think we did, but did we? And then we're gonna say, now that you have all this stuff, would you change your recommendations? Would you consider different ideas? What did, what do you believe from a vision the community is really saying, that the organization is really saying? Then, of course, we'll develop a highly accessible plan, document, um, benchmarks, dashboards. We do all of that, and then we'll work with the team here to actually create the first eighteen months of the work plan of the ten year vision. So those are the, that's, I mean, it, within a couple of minutes, it's a lot of work, but those are the things that are ahead of us.
It's so exciting.
And you're gonna get something like this. You're gonna get, and we'll work with your team. What do they want? Do they want a checklist? Do they want, um, how do they wanna prioritize capital services? So we are very fortunate to have our own graphic and, uh, digital design staff on our team directly at Barry Dunn. So whatever you want, we, we don't just say, hey, this is just Barry Dunn. We'll give you what we, we do. We customize it, meet you guys where you're at. So you'll have this. That is it. Questions?
Well done. Just so excited. Yeah.
It is pretty awesome. I guess, I don't know, I did a lot of praise, I think. How many towns have you came across that just did all this great work and then it just fell by the side? Like when, we did like, you just went back in two years and they didn't do it?
Well, I think that, um, typically the organizations that hire Barry Dunn. Um, and I'm not just saying this, but are, are organizations that want action. Because a lot of what we talk about in our interview, and a lot of we talk, our, our team, you know, it volunteers to teach and instruct all over the country on various items. We, that's, we talk about action. Some. All the projects that I've worked on and with our team have led to progress. I can say that. When I was on the other side of the table in Billy's position, as an example, I can tell you, I got exhausted of efforts when it was fluffy. Never could we understand how to accomplish this stuff, because we had our day jobs to do, running into the system, and they set it on the shelf. It bothers us, um, you know, as professionals at Barry Dunn, when we don't see action granted, that's also through the understanding is. It's really up to you. What do you want to do for your community? I will do my very best to provide you the data, the, uh, the analysis that would help enable you to like get grants. Help enable you to better tell your story, right, to the community about the, about the why. So, uh. Every project that I have worked on at Barry Dunn for years has led to, just being real honest.
Yeah, no, it's great, and.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, these are huge things to do, are huge accomplishments to get going.
Yeah, maybe more than you wanna hear, but the reason I retired. If you wanna call it that in the public sector, it was because exactly what Barry Dunn is doing. So you guys are in good hands. And we don't, we don't, you know, we bring action to communities to, at whatever level that is for you guys, yeah.
I think the, the biggest thing for me, and I'm excited to have your energy behind it, Barry Dunn's energy, because I think. We know that the biggest hurdle with Wellington is communication. And I worry about our community choosing not to engage. A, and because, and I, you know, it's a conversation that we have to have over and over again, and I think from my perspective, it's just that like, ugh. I want people to engage, but I also know. That Wellington can kind of be hard when it comes to that.
So far, not for us. Granted, I mean, you could say, well, that's easy, because they've been in public gatherings. But, um, we typically create bridges, uh, and new channels of communication in areas that you haven't talked to in, in town to across the nation. That lead to things. And I can give you a dozen examples of that, but. The funniest thing, kind of putting a visual in your mind, if you will, the funniest thing I've ever seen Rich do. At an event, we really, we, we saw some, some, some population wasn't one to engage. This happened. Somehow he found a fishing pole. We didn't have it on us. I don't know where he got it from. He attached like a twenty dollar bill. A hundred yards away and was pulling it, and he's watching as different people are trying to grab it. And he brought it all the way back to him to talk to people about the conversation. I, I saw that. I literally saw it again. The other funny one was, um. The mobile chalkboard.
Sorry for everybody online. We had a technical difficulty. We're back on. Um, just missed the very end of Barry Dunn's presentation from Jason, just basically wrapping up. And, uh, he's headed out.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys. Great job.
And I'm speaking to nobody. Eric left.
Oh, he did?
Yeah. What's the idea? Take a two minute break, I guess.
I didn't look at that one. I did that pin. It's like a two minute break.
Oh, yeah, this place.
All right, we're back.
Wander away. Like a half hour just.
Next agenda item is future meetings calendar. Do we, what was my time there? We kind of set it up last time, right, for, so our perks next week, month are what? Do you remember? I think. But I know we kind of set it up, right?
Did we go WCP Library Centennial, maybe? I think.
It's on the agenda.
I did move a couple of things around that were on there. The one thing that I will add to that, and we're still working on, did everybody get the link for? Uh, or, or the link is on the, the Google Drive for, um. The bylaws. Thank you. If everybody can just take a look at that. Hannah and I are still working a little bit on that. I, I need to get all of our edits onto that. But there is a Word document that you can either save and edit yourselves, or just look at it and email back. But hopefully we can adopt new ones, if, if it needs to be pushed off another month. It's been sitting there for a while. I know we need to do it. Is it critical while we're doing all this stuff? That's up to you guys, but I'll try my best to get it out so we can adopt it.
Okay. Um, next topic announcements, town staff, parks, recreation.
I'll make it real simple. We, Fourth of July, right, um, we had a pump go down at Viewpoint. While the pump was down, we put in a new operating system for our irrigation, which is gonna be online with, or in line with. Kind of our, um, cloud-based system. It doesn't have all the full operation functions, but that is back up and running. So if you look at Viewpoint, it isn't in the greatest shape, but the pump was down, so they pulled it and got it installed this morning. I spent some time today reprogramming everything into the brand new clock that I set up last week, so we should be good to go there. I did have a meeting, uh, a, a four mile walk today with Noco Bike Ped. And there are a lot of people that sit on that board that are, um, from local organizations. I won't get into it. Open spaces, trails, natural areas, Fort Collins, Lammery County, like a lot of people, Seadop is there. And I took my time to say, please come engage. We are doing our master plan. We want to connect to Fort Collins. Everybody's like, all right, we want to connect to South. I shouldn't say just Fort Collins, um, but, uh. Everybody's on board, and there's a chance we'll host the next bike, Noco Bike Pad meeting in Wellington. They want to do a walkability with us. So I'm hoping to be able to, I didn't wanna take his time, Jason's time today, but maybe before the engagement period is over. Have them all come up because they're huge enthusiasts, as we all know. Um, do a walkability with Roast and with Barry Dunn. So that would be something that isn't on our schedule with Barry Dunn, but as flexible as they are, I can't see how they would take that as a negative. I think that would be an insane positive. Something that didn't foresee, so I'm gonna work on that. That just came out of today.
Cool. Thank you.
I'll pass on from there.
Okay. Uh, rec, open spaces, trails, good?
Recreation, uh, fall sports are open. Um, summer sports are going like crazy, and the, though we're kind of wrapping up in the next few weeks. And open spaces, as Laurel and said, we don't have a ton of those, but we're always looking to continue our rehab there. We've been seeding a lot. As always, not right now, but hoping that it continues to grow out there, um. I will get back to everybody. I've been talking with, uh, the Disc Golf Club about when we're gonna do that. So we're kind of going back and forth about trying to figure a few things out.
Um, okay, Board of Trustee, Trustee Daily?
Um, the biggest news from our board, if you follow us, is that all of our, um, audits are complete. Uh, so it's big news, just on behalf of the entire town, that things are on track and looking great from a financial perspective. Um, some of those things could have potentially, or would continue to hold up, uh, receiving tax dollars back to our town. Those are the kind of things in general fund up on things like parks and recs, or recs. So, um, everything's looking good there. I just attended the Colorado Municipal League Conference in Brecken, Breckenridge, which. Making something original. Uh, we went and saw trolls and stuff while we were there, and it just kind of was an idea of like. Making something really special in the community or, uh, that's a destination or something is, was a good reminder there. But outside of that, the most intriguing, I've had a lot of scary meetings that were really just scared me a lot, but. One of the fun ones I had was talking about creating a creative district. Um, and art is going up all over the place. Art is generally in parks, sculpture parks, all kinds of things, murals we're talking about right now. Um, and the process to create, uh, creative district, the funds and the businesses associated with you and something like that. Um, so I'm personally gonna be pursuing that, just getting more information and maybe seeing if that's on track for what the board is interested in pursuing. Cause the town could sponsor that, um, that process. It's not a quick process, but. Uh, that was one of the funner things I got out, and they talked about, um, markets and bringing people to parks. And it was amazing listening to other communities and a panel of all the things that they've done as a creative district. So I think it's something that definitely aligns with a lot of our. Projects and goals, um, so I'm gonna be exploring that more. But if you guys have any questions or needs, please let me know.
Can I back up for just a second? I went over Fourth of July really quick. I just wanna thank not just, uh. You know, the community for coming out and everybody everywhere. I thought the Fourth of July went really well. Jason said, there's always tweaks internally that we need to do, but I, I really appreciate the support from this board, but. I just wanna say a special thanks to our team, um, you know, Eric, Emma, Kristen, Ellie. Um, on the recreation side, and then Ron, Michelle, and Anton, our parks technicians, they. Um, they weren't all that day. One of them came in the next day to do cleanup and turn irrigation back on, because we shut a lot of stuff off so that we don't have problems. So it's not just the Fourth of July, it's the prep for the, you know, from two weeks out up to the event. And then the day after, cleaning up everything that happened across town. It's more than just that, and we, we had staff in from five AM. Till eleven thirty PM, um, so it's, it's, it's a whole town thing. The names I said aren't the only ones there, you know. Caitlin did an, an amazing job. I know it's crazy for her that day, and Kelly Holding was in all day. And then aside from that, the Public Works Crew did a great job with road closures and police and fire. They said that, uh, you know, uh, both the sergeant and, um. And the chief were, were both very complimentary. They're like, we, we didn't have a ton to do with this many people coming in. And it being in three different places and moving, and they were just very, uh, excited about how well we put it together and did. And that makes us feel good. Again, we'll always go back and, uh, the next day I was like. Didn't do this, and then on the phone with this person, like, how could we do, you know, we're gonna have our debrief and try to improve. Uh, next year's gonna look a little different, depending on Cleveland, but we're still gonna try to put it on and do our best to continue the movement. And, and it's Wellington's Day, right? Like, we do it really, really well, and people come from all over the place. And I talked to people that said, two specific families that were sitting next to each other at the fireworks. That said, neither one of them were from Wellington. One of them comes every year, one of them, this was their first time, and they're never going anywhere else, and they're always coming back. And it was just like, cool. Hopefully our residents felt the same, but like those families were just straight engaging, because I was in my stuff. And, uh, Ryan was there from Barry Dunn. He was there passing out, uh, glow sticks and talking about the master plan. And I came up to him and was engaging with him and just chatting, and these two families were like, we've, this is amazing. What a cool day, so. Anything that, you know, after this, that we can debrief on, that you, you've seen that we could improve on, but I just wanna thank the staff, thank the team. Thank the support we get from fire and police, but also just say like, I feel like we did a pretty job.
It was a job well done.
I thought it was really good. I was low and last minute on my, at the skate park, but it was still. Yeah, it, it went great. Yeah, make it real well. You know, let me come in and put the tent up on the scale. It thought were great. Everything was great and. The light, the people that would stop and then continue on and stop and continue on. So I just, there was so much more flow instead of.
Flow exposure.
Really, really nice.
I just wanted to reiterate that.
So I don't even know what happened at Taylor Parks. I never get anywhere else. It's just how it works. But, oh, yeah, so it's, it's, I, I feel like it was really good.
Good, thank you. Um, okay, park updates, our tours, anything that we want to talk about before we go on our park tour?
Oh, what a huge improvement having that little sidewalk filled in that gap. It made that place so much more accessible. It's, it's amazing. It's just like having concrete from here to here, which is changed everything out there, yeah. It's very good.
Okay, a motion to adjourn. All right, uh, seven thirty-eight.